Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Really, really great to be here and have this conversation. I'm, of course, here with Sanya and Nuno from Utrust. And today, we're going to have a very, very exciting conversation about a bit the backstory of how we reached this point, where we are specifically, and some of the really, really exciting things that are ahead of us. So we welcome everyone from the Elron community. We welcome everyone from the Utrust community. And we'll cover a few things. Then probably at the end, we'll also have a Q and A. So feel free to prepare your questions and we'll be very happy to go over them. So yeah, without, without going too much into the general discussion, I think the most important point of the conversation is that Utrust and Elron are joining forces. And we're specifically joining forces to build something that is much larger than something any one company could achieve or could build. And we're very, very focused and have been throughout the conversations. And actually, this is how the conversation started, on this bright future that we have ahead of us, where it's not only about a blockchain that can really handle high bandwidth, low latency and transparent transactions at the speed and scale of the internet, but then also payments, especially Web3 payments, that can really take this technology and bring it to the merchants, to the users in a very, very powerful way. So maybe to start the conversation a bit and see how we came to this point, we'll share a bit with Sanya and with Nuno how we met and how we started the conversations. And I can really say that conversations have been in the process for more than one year. So it was a very, very interesting path to this point. And I'll just invite Sanya and then maybe Nuno to share a few thoughts on this point. Then we'll discuss the next ones.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for having us here in this beautiful studio. It's amazing to be here in the office all together for the first time. The atmosphere is great. And I think, you know, the best opportunities and partnerships in life and business do not happen when you push for them. They happen, you know, spontaneously when you realize that you are aligned in terms of like vision and values. And that's exactly what happened in our case. And you know, Nuno can provide more visibility of that and the history because it started really like one year ago. But it really came from the point of when we realized we want to collaborate instead of potentially compete into developing something very similar. Because we both saw, both companies saw the opportunity of the Web3 technology and cryptocurrency payments. And that's exactly why we decided it makes more sense to do it together rather than separately. And I think, you know, this concept of collaboration versus competition is really important in the marketplace. Because what we usually see, not only in our industry, but in multiple industries, is these leaders and founders and company owners that are very much driven by the desire to dominate the marketplace with their brand and with their company, instead of thinking, you know, what is the value that I can provide to my customer? So very much like ego-driven, I call it. And that's exactly what we are not. Because, you know, we think about something larger than just ourselves. So what is the impact that we want to have for our customers and for our community? And yeah, we're very happy to share this journey together.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's exactly that. I mean, been talking both teams for a long time. The more we talk, the more we realize that we want to build and are building very similar things. We have the same mission and vision for payments. So we decided to explore deeper how, how both teams together would look. Then we realized it would look very powerful. We are talking about brilliant team members, vibrant community on both sides. So is it better to go by ourselves? Or unite ourselves with giants that can push with us forward? That's exactly what we did. Prior to, of this happening, obviously, both teams were very friendly. I talked to Danny on a monthly basis about the developments, how you guys were pushing also crypto payments, how you wanted to explore that and focus on that. So for us, it was natural. It's kind of crazy when I think about it, but it was nothing forced. It was absolutely natural. We just felt that both teams are very similar, very strong, and want to push for the same things. So we united. Here we are now. And yeah, I'm super happy. I mean, exciting times. And that's basically it.
Yeah, and I'll just add a bit of how the context always reach me, of course. It's interesting that we always build this very deep relationships with some of our collaborators and so forth. And it's sometimes direct, like I would have them or whatever, or different team members that really believe in some projects, in some products, in some themes. And it's after a long time that you somehow discover this really cool, exciting opportunity where things align. Because we've done a lot of things until the point where the focus came on the payments part. We've, of course, thought about different versions of taking the technology and putting it to the greatest use possible. But Danny always came with updates from discussions with you guys, what you guys were doing and different interesting things. And then at some point specifically, while we were, of course, discussing with TwistPay and so forth, and some of the community members already know about the efforts we put in with the TwistPay team and so forth, he just told me about how much progress you've made, how interesting the product was, and that it might be super interesting to have a conversation. And then at that point, we started a closer conversation. I remember we were traveling, actually. Probably Germany, I'm not sure anymore. But we've had the conversation, interesting insights about the different things that you guys were doing, the focus and so forth. But what I would say struck me from the beginning, and this also was underscored by Danny, is that you guys were not only smart and thoughtful, but also really great people to have the conversations with. And at Elron, we've specifically put the focus on a few things. Like, of course, everyone knows that things are hardcore at Elron. And we're trying to push super hard on things and whenever we believe in that. But having very smart people and thoughtful people and people that are nice is something very rare. And yeah, so really great to have started the conversations and to see so many things being started with years before and now reaching really, really good points to move forward. I think this is valuable for the community just because a lot of things happen behind the scenes. Even with legal discussions, even with all the technical implications, implementations, with the things that would have been aligned on the future progress and so forth. But one thing that I think always aligns people is this ability to grow the pie tremendously, to find a way to make an impact on the world beyond anything that has been done up until that point. And by doing so, being able to... There are, it seems, two models. The model where people see everything as zero sum. Like, in order for me to grow, I need to take something from you and so forth. Or the model where you basically can start from scratch to reimagine something completely and say, we can grow this 10x. Everything that has been built without taking anything from anyone. And this part and the way that the next year, the next five years, 10x, 10 years will look regarding not only blockchain technology, crypto, but then crypto payments and Web3 payments is what brings us together and what aligns interests in a very, very powerful way. And maybe we're going to start the discussion a bit with also the context set in this sense that Web3 is a very new concept, that people are still maybe struggling or are tackling and trying to understand. But this idea that you can have tokens for the communities to have a say in the product, to be able to engage, to be able to participate, to share feedback. And the fact that this makes a product extremely powerful. This is something unique that we have built together and that we're also treating very carefully and very creatively in this situation here. So maybe I'll invite you guys, Sanya and Nuno, to share a bit about Web3 payments specifically, how you guys currently see payments, what's actually happening there. And then some key points regarding the key insights or features that you see that will become extremely valuable for the users, customers. Probably I'll then follow up a bit, but I'm quite curious to hear your thoughts.
Go ahead, Sanya. You can. I think Sanya has great inputs on this, me as well. But I really like the inputs that Sanya has because she came from PayPal, right? She saw, I never worked at PayPal. I'm 100% crypto guy. But Sanya had the experience, the two worlds. That's why I love her inputs.
We were talking yesterday at dinner actually about that, that basically, you know, my journey into crypto and blockchain was a bit different because usually what I see, you know, generally people enter into the crypto space because, you know, they're either trade crypto or invest. And for me, it was really responding to a problem that I saw in the industry that I was working with. So I spent several years in e-commerce at eBay first and then at PayPal. And that was all a great experience. But basically, when I went to PayPal, my team was developing the payment solution for marketplace players. And I was really surprised in seeing the experience for the customers, like the merchants and the marketplaces and the fees that we were charging. And the main problem with all the traditional payment industry being that, you know, PayPal, Stripe, a gateway, or even like sending a wire transfer is that the merchant is being overcharged, especially when doing international transactions, which today is like the norm. If you don't sell internationally, you're gonna die. You're gonna die soon in this marketplace. And today, a merchant can end up paying between 3% and 12% in payment processing fees.
It's crazy.
And yeah, basically for me, it was how can I respond to this by solving this? So I'm talking about 2017. And I had this idea, let's bring blockchain into the PayPal ecosystem to solve the problem. I was living in the UK at the time, and it was very early stage for PayPal. So in the meantime, I researched the companies that were solving the problem in Europe. And I found the white paper that Nuno wrote. There was no product, no MVP, nothing. And I wrote to Nuno on LinkedIn, and that's how we started working together. Because we fell in love with the idea of solving this problem. But also, you know, if you are, if you are a seller, you're selling online, you know that chargebacks are a huge problem. And today, this represents a 40 billion loss in the e-commerce industry just because of like fraud and chargebacks and stolen credit cards. And this is the idea of Web3 payments. So removing all these traditional intermediaries like credit cards, like banks, out of the equation and using the power of blockchain to solve that. So radically decreasing payment processing fees, eliminating the cost of chargebacks, but also being able to confirm the payment immediately. Because today, what happens as well is, you know, if I'm a seller, I need to wait like a week to receive a payment before shipping my item.
Or more.
So that creates a lot of friction. But what we discovered as well through our journey, like on top of all of this, the main value prop that we bring to our customer and to the merchant is the ability to tap into a new asset class of people and customers that are really passionate about paying with cryptocurrencies. And those, this is a new asset class of people. They are wealthier, they are tech savvy, they spend more, and they are more loyal to the merchants. So usually, we bring, you know, new sales and incremental revenue as a result. Because, you know, we are still at the beginning. So there are not many merchants that are accepting crypto payments. And that really allows them to have incremental sales and revenue as a result of, you know, new customers. But it's really, you know, we are just scratching the surface. It's the beginning. According to chain analysis, I think there was an 800% increase in crypto payments in the last 12 months. So imagine, you know, what we can do in a few years' time. And also what we're seeing is a different behavior in like emerging countries versus more developed countries. So in emerging countries, crypto is already being used to hedge, you know, wealth, to pay for remittances. Today, like sending a $200 remittance will cost you 20 dollars more or less, which is unacceptable, like in the world we live today. So that's exactly what we solve, mostly in emerging countries. But also, we're seeing like a huge increase in Europe, in other countries as well. So I think, you know, the best is yet to come. We are just at the beginning, and it's really exciting.
I totally agree with everything you said, Sanya. It's important for everyone to realize that the payment networks that people use today are decades old. They overcharge the users. Why? Because they are mainly monopolies. And we are here to change that. Like Elon Musk changed the automobile industry with electric cars. In the beginning, people, hmm, nobody will use electric cars. Gasoline is here forever. And you see the trend. Same with crypto payments. How will traditional payment gateways compete with us? We can be much faster, cheaper, leaner. Because we use Web3 technology. They use Web2 technology. They are legacy. On top of that, obviously, using Utrust is safer and cheaper. We already know it. So we have a huge advantage here. When this starts picking up, it will pick up fast, fast and faster. As we are seeing now, the growth, but the growth will become faster and faster. Suddenly, merchants are all switching to crypto payments. It will happen. It's the natural evolution of species. Let's go like that, and technology always wins. But we also have things on our product that are challenging the traditional payment gateways. Did you know that PayPal uses the merchant's balances to land and gain interest? So not only they charge you a huge amount of money, they also use your money to make money for themselves. And you, as an end user, as a merchant, you see nothing, none, zero. You pay high fees, you get nothing. We are here to change the paradigm. We are here to make merchants money. Why? Because instead of overcharging them, we will charge them a fair fee in line with what technology can do today. Instead of using their money to make money for ourselves, we will allow them to make money with their own money. It's the natural thing to do with the merchant yield and leveraging, obviously, DeFi capabilities. So we are on the front line of innovation when it comes to payments. We are still small. It's normal. But trust me, that the faster we grow, the bigger we will become. And I couldn't be more confident in the payment space going in the Web3 direction. It's because it's a natural path of evolution. And us together as a team, as a united team now, we are going to push as strong as we can to be the number one players. And even if traditional payment systems want to compete with us, they will go bankrupt. They cannot change their structure. They charge those fees because their structure is old. They cannot adapt as fast as we can. And we see that happening. Look what Tesla did to other car manufacturers. And you have a ton of examples like that. So yeah, I'm very, very bullish on the future of Web3 payments. Benny, Danny, everybody is. I mean, our team united, we are all laser focused. We know that this is going to be the next big thing that will change in the world, how people pay and get paid. And we are in the frontline fighting for adoption.
Yeah, and I would very much say two things here that I've been thinking a lot recently about. Namely, that crypto people usually suffer of a kind of problem that you're too close to everything that's happening to gain perspective. Like, it's so close to you that at times you forget how big everything can become. And even though you're saying it, seeing it sort of with new eyes as people saw it with the internet, seeing how this could be relieved. And we many times have had discussions, even with our team, where it was extremely important for us to see what some of the early startups of the internet have done, how they felt versus how things turned out. Because you're very much pushing, you're very focused on that point. And then a lot of things changed while you're doing this. And I would only say that things have changed tremendously in the markets only since we started. I'm not saying like since 10 years ago, when this technology appeared and so forth. Only since 2017, 2018, if you look at how the market has shifted, the perception has shifted, how everyone from really, like really deep skepticism and almost interesting hilarious jokes, yeah, a kind of comic denial, they've shifted to this could actually be the largest asset class in the world, the largest wealth creation event in the world. And then different opportunities like payments are specifically ways in which we take some of the technologies we've built and we put them to the greatest use possible. Because with Elron, what we complement very much in what you guys are doing and focusing on is this layer without which the payments can actually not become as flawless as we would want them to be. So if we think about payments and their ultimate version, then ideally, payments should happen between two entities, nearly instant, anywhere, from anywhere to anywhere in the world, at a trivial cost. Whenever you have something like this, the economy will work a lot better, a lot more efficient, enabling a lot more people, merchants and so forth, to interact. But then, this is, this seems to be the first step. And here, the Elron, as people have seen, I think, from our communities, not only has it been a lot of discussion in the background, but also a lot of work. Because immediately after we announced the joining of forces, we also announced the integration, we also announced merchants, and we intend to continue on that. But the integration of Elron as a network is the first step, of course. Integration of stable coins coming on Elron and enabling merchants to interact even more flawlessly is a second step. Maybe a third step, that's actually really the paradigm shift, is the merchant yield. And I think here, we can really not overstate how much this would trigger questions. Because at first, it almost seems too good to be true. It's so powerful that when you hear about it, start wondering, are these people serious? I mean, if they're serious, then I do want to make some money as a merchant. And maybe around this, we can, we can share a bit more why this is super powerful, how it changes the paradigm completely, and also why we believe this will take off like wildfire. So if you, if you guys want to share a bit on that?
I mean, it's pretty easy to understand. As I mentioned previously, what happens currently in the Web2 payments space, merchants that hold their balances, all merchants hold balances with payment gateways at any point. Some merchants hold more time, some less. Payment gateways use that capital to gain interest, to land, to make money, basically. It's not their, it's not their capital, but they use it to make money for themselves. This is extremely strange for my head to understand, but this is how the Web2 payment system is built today. So a merchant that pays, let's say, 5%, 7%, 10% to PayPal, still has the balance there, makes no money on it, might get hit with chargebacks because you still have to put your financial information online to make payments when it comes to the legacy system. It's crazy. I put my card numbers. How safe is... That's, that's old school. Anyways, so that merchant, let's say that his profit margin after paying PayPal taxes, everything, is 10%. If he saves 5%, 7%, 10%, by not using PayPal, his profit margin increases. If he gets interest for his own balance, his own money, and we obviously will leverage DeFi for that, he can make more 5% or 10%. Suddenly, a merchant that made 10% is doing 25%, 30% profit. Can you beat this? Hell no. Nobody can beat this. This is, this is why this is so powerful. Because we are going to completely shift the way merchants think about payment gateways. A payment gateway should be your partner, should exist to make you the maximum amount of profitable possible, to retain users, to have a great user experience, all of that. But traditional payment gateways now are just focused on their own profits. And obviously, in order to do that, they need to get that from the merchants and the users and all of that. I mean, you can check PayPal fees. They have a page with 20 different types of fees. It's insane. By using blockchain, you can narrow it down to 1% flat fee. Done, no headaches, straightforward for the merchants. And then you can make extra money if you let the balance with us. We will leverage DeFi to bring you more profit. This is something that I'm really, I mean, I'm crazy about this, obviously, because I love this. Because I think it will make a huge difference for merchants all over the world. And it will pick up like wildfire, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when thinking about merchant yield, it's important to understand like the history and how we got to it. Because as a payment gateway, that was our core product. Today, we have multiple products. But we were born to enable crypto-to-Fiat payments because that's what the market wanted. It was still early stage. The merchant wanted to have, you know, a safe payment in fiat in their bank account and still enable crypto payments. Today, that's actually shifting, and we are seeing this shift accelerating, right? In the last 18 months, with merchants actively asking us to settle in crypto. Why? Because they want to have it in their treasury. So they wanna, you know, mimic some other large companies and do the same and have, you know, access to crypto as well. So from there, we said, okay, what else can we do? Because we already drastically decreased payment processing fees. We eliminated chargebacks and fraud. We allow merchants to tap into this huge opportunity. So what else can we do? Because merchants were actively asking us, you know, to manage their crypto as well. And that's where the concept of like merchant yield was born. And I think it will be very soon that we are starting testing this with like friendly partners as well. And what is also important for us is the concept of financial inclusion, not only like on the buyer's side, because we know that like 2 billion people are unbanked. And not only that, but on the merchant's side, really allowing anyone to be able to trade. So even, you know, smaller companies that are able now to adopt our technology and use it from day one without having to have any knowledge about installing or blockchain or crypto. So that's really beautiful. And it will radically change how people perceive a payment gateway and a payment company. And we will be leading this, this change, which is beautiful.
Yeah, I do think that we're just at the beginning of this. And it cannot be overstated how old the technology is and how deprecated the technology is that we're currently using in finance. I do think that over the next months and years, this will change extremely fast. And maybe some of the And maybe some of the points that we can go into is the key focus points that we are having, that we are looking at and that we are specifically seeing with the merchants. So I remember that we specifically discussed about this two points, which is, one, making payments as seamless as possible and frictionless as possible for the merchants and users. And the way we're doing this, like integrating Elrond, this is live, just because transactions are cheaper, they're faster, they're most more seamless. And for both users and merchants, this becomes extremely valuable. And then, of course, a next step that's very valuable for both merchants and users is having a stable coin.
Yep.
On top of a network that is inexpensive. And then everything related to things that we've discussed, like the roadmap. And here, maybe you can go in more details. And then the merchant yield specifically as to what the first version may be like. These are two points that I think the community would love to hear about, although I'm sure they will receive some articles going more in depth and so forth. It's probably extremely useful for them to have some things to look toward, to understand what we're focusing on. And some of the things, I think, they're also seen with the moves that we've made. If you want to, if you want to share more on the focus and key next steps?
Yeah, I think what is going to be exciting probably for the two communities to know is that and going into the concept of web three and community, we decided to really embed our communities more into what we do. So we will build publicly, and we will start to do it very soon. So I'm talking about a few weeks, not months. So what does that mean? It's not that we will disclose exactly every hour what the team is focusing on. But everyone will understand, you know, what are the macro teams that we're building, why, what are the needs of the customers, and also disclose challenges as well, so that the community will be embedded into our product and they will have the opportunity to provide feedback as well. We already launched a product blog, which was amazingly received. So you will see more and more of that. So our product teams, you know, coming on video and live and and talking about what they're building. But I think, you know, in terms of the macro themes, what we already mentioned, crypto settlements. So for now, this has been done kind of manually, but soon we will release an automated way to do crypto settlements, so that every merchant, when they onboard, they can decide if they want to be settled in fiat or crypto. And in the future, a combination as well of fiat and crypto. I want to receive like half of my payments in fiat, half in crypto. That will be possible. The second stream, of course, is merchant yield. And then there will be a big focus into building for specific verticals. Because what we saw today is that there is a huge demand for crypto payments in specific industries, let's say. And one of them is real estate. And when you're buying a real estate property, let's say it's a $1 million transaction, you need a different type of experience than when transacting like a small transaction on the gateway. So we will be focusing a lot into building more personalized and unique experiences per vertical. And also, one thing that we're talking about a lot is how can we, you know, because in the end, what are payments? It's about connecting buyers and sellers. So how can we create this flywheel of meeting demand with what sellers are selling and being, you know, that catalyst for change? So connecting buyers and sellers more and more into meeting their needs. There will be a lot about, you know, enabling stable coins and new currencies and even new blockchain in the gateway as well. And we will be focusing more on improving payment conversion and speed, so providing the best payment experience and also improving integrations and APIs. So today, we cover most of the market with our plugins, but we will be adding more. And even improving, you know, the integration for the merchant, allowing them maybe to white label as well the experience. So these are like the high-level macro teams.
I agree. Also important to mention, obviously, that in the in the merchant yield, we will have a staking for merchants. This is something important. We do believe that the merchants also need to be educated on that side. They need to participate in this new economy. And as Tanya said, more and more merchants want to have a piece of crypto. So I think whatever we release, it will be connected to our token, obviously. But we can touch on some ideas that we have for the token on a later stage.
What maybe I would add a bit as a context is, again, crypto in general has value to the degree it has utility.
Yep.
This was and still is the main challenge and the main obstacle for which crypto has not seen mainstream adoption. There are many challenges. But one of the ways to approach this is not wait for utility to just appear, but strategically find ways to add utility. And one of the biggest utilities that you can actually have is taking a version of currency and exchanging it for whatever you want.
Yep.
Whether it's real estate, whether it's whatever you want to buy, having this possibility creates a lot of value for that particular currency. So I think a lot of the focus has been on identifying these challenges with Utrust, enabling cryptocurrencies to really become useful. It's why we focused on building these things not only as a user-facing application, but then also as infrastructure that enables merchants and so forth to connect at grand scale. And so this is one of the points. Second is, again, looking at how few merchants are currently tapping into this market. The opportunity is absolutely enormous. Being able to share with them this application, this utility of different currencies such as eGold, such as UTK, is not only a really great way to add utility for the users, but also a great way to market. Because most of the users that usually ask about crypto and hear about crypto have this still preconceived notion that you can never use it in the real world.
Yep.
And I remember even discussing with some of the colleagues, some of our colleagues, that it was people in the 60s, 70s that, as they heard about the integrations with the real estate companies, they said, hey, hey dude, I really want to buy a few of your coins just because I heard you can now buy real things with them, houses and cars and so forth. And this is very understated as an education step that, once done correctly, brings a lot more users, brings a lot more merchants, then enables us to execute on something that is literally not done at all. It's like this market is not existing if we're not putting the work and then enabling the merchants to come in, enabling the users to use the money. And we're very much going to focus on scaling number of merchants in enabling in different parts of the world, people to really tap into these services. And I do believe that this value will be captured not only at a merchant level and at a user level, but also at a, let's say, currency level and ecosystem level, in the sense that the more you can use the currency, the more trust you have, the more trust you have, the more you will invest and experiment. And so, yeah, web three payments will absolutely be a big theme in 2022. And it's great that we've been working on this for some time to now push on the things. Maybe a few points that would be useful is at least briefly touching a bit on what the way forward will look like, how we're looking to interact with the communities, essentially joining forces in that space as well. And here, I'll touch a bit on the Elrond community and why they've been crucial in all the steps we've made and why we believe the Utrust community will be crucial in all the steps we'll be making together and so forth. I've seen a lot of interaction already between the communities since our announcements and so forth. But then, an important point will probably also be around the token and looking at that with fresh eyes, how this can be really enhanced and elevated in a way that brings a tremendous amount of value to the ecosystem, tremendous amount of value to the merchants and to the users, so that it really becomes a mechanism that is valuable from a few different angles. Then perhaps also the holdup, the way we're trying to approach the ecosystem, maybe touching a bit on those points and then seeing if there are also some community questions would be really great. So maybe you want to touch specifically on the token part?
I think, yeah. I think the token part is obviously very important. We have been discussing the new utility slash model that we want to implement. Obviously, I think everybody at this point knows that we are going to swap to the Elrond blockchain. Why? Because it's much better than ERC 20. It's super safe, super fast. And we are a payments company. We cannot continue on a blockchain that charges sometimes $100 per transaction. It's crazy. We have some cool things that we have been discussing. We will definitely implement a buyback and a burn mechanism as well. As the community knows, last year, we passed 100 million in volume. And obviously, we are not talking about exchanging crypto between users. This is real economy volume. This is people buying goods and services. This is the real deal. So the growth has been insane. And we want the volume of the platform, regardless if the users are using different currencies, to have a direct impact on the token performance. So definitely, buyback and burn, we will implement that. We also have a very, very cool five-years staking model, on-chain staking model built. I think that that will create tremendous value for our community. It's very well thought. And our community has been asking for this for a long time. I understand that this will go parallel to staking. So you'll have two types of staking, on-chain and obviously staking on the products. So there are two streams there. And then other things that we will propose to our community. The goal here is probably to propose something next week, so we can gather feedback from our community and if necessary, improve here and there. But we are quite confident of the model we have drafted now. And next week, we will share with the community.
And what I will add here, just as an idea, is complementing what Nuno said. The key points that make a token valuable are, on the one hand, the utility. So what is it really useful for? What can I not do without this token? What doors does the token open for me? This is one really important point. And we've spent a lot of time in designing a model that is extremely exciting for the Utrust community and enables them to participate in this new web three ecosystem in a new way. So utility is one thing, and utility that, as you said, enables merchants to gain something. Utility that enables the community to gain something. And for these two things, there will be two separate models. The staking part is by far the most valuable thing we've discovered throughout the time. And we're quite excited about the model that the Utrust token will have. It will be staking, and this means the community will be able to participate in a new way. The merchants part, that they will gain some new and added benefits as they hold more Utrust tokens. This is also very, very valuable. Then the value accrual mechanism is valuable. Not only is utility valuable, but then question is, how do you accrue value? As time goes on, is there any mechanism that enables the token to capture more value, to bring that value within the community and so forth? And there is a specific model for that part as well. Then the entire economics model, like how many tokens would there be? How does the model look? How does it align the different stakeholders that exist, namely the community, the merchants, the users? And here, we believe that this will really be an exciting period, because once the users and the community see this new model, it will finally give them something to look towards. Not only the benefits, immediate benefits, but the longer-term benefits with the merchants as well. And also the bootstrapping part, given that we will have a community that is large and really excited about the payments part, which is the Utrust community, and then a really large, super passionate and powerful community from the Elrond side, that is not only excited about blockchain, but is now embracing the payments part as well and joining. There will also be a bootstrapping, really exciting bootstrapping phase for the for the Elrond community to join in the Utrust token in some creative way. As Nuno has mentioned, this is best shared with the document, where you basically see the entire document, see the reasoning, see the model. And this will be presented probably next week to get the feedback from the community and then prepare for a really, really ambitious phase. What I can say is it's great that Elrond has already the DEX live. It's great that it has a wallet that is, that has more than 700,000 users at this point. And then having this new token within the Elrond network does not only mean that you're randomly issuing a token, but it means that within this very special community, the token is looked at in a very new way and that people can engage, that they can participate and so forth. And so we're quite excited about this phase. We believe that the community will also be super excited as soon as the plan is shared and it becomes more clear with each point covered in detail. Another step and interesting point that might be useful just as an idea to share is touching a bit on the holdup and the way we're looking in this at the holdup from this angle. And the idea is this, in the holdup, at this point, there are around 27,000 users. And there is some activity, and people are, of course, excited about the application that has usage. But then imagine what it really means to have an application where you have more than 10x, more than 20x the number of users, where the token can go, where you know that people are holders, thinking long-term about the different subjects, and an application that will interact not only at the payments level with the QR codes and so forth, but also with new features
Yep.
that will enable people to use the token in different settings and so forth. So we'll probably give the opportunity to users to migrate, to join this new application. But of course, both the token part and the holdup part will not happen overnight. We want to have very careful conversations with the community, get the best feedback as possible. But we do believe that with this new model, things can supercharge.
Yep.
Things can really be taken to the next level. And this is why I do think that as soon as the community sees the posts and the model and so forth, they'll get excited, starting to look at things in a new light. And yeah, this is a special moment and can't wait to actually share that. I'm curious if you want to maybe share something regarding this, Tanya? I'm curious if you want to maybe share something regarding this, Tanya?
No, I think we already shared a lot. I think, you know, it's a great time to be alive, to be able to drive this change together, to be, you know, at the forefront of innovation together. And now with the two teams uniting, being able to do this at scale and more fast. And I think, you know, in the following weeks, we will also bring the teams more and more together to build and to be able to lead this change.
And we complement each other as team members in different areas. That's what makes me even more excited about all of us working together.
Yeah, maybe before going to some questions for the community, I would say precisely this. It's very early, but we're at this inflection point where payments will probably change completely just because the technology is really outdated. And now, all of a sudden, there's a new category of people with a new category of merchants that are starting to use these new tools. Of course, we'll try to push extremely hard on these things. But yeah, the point we're at, the fact that things are integrated already and that we're seeing many merchants from around the world being able to integrate Utrust and move forward is great. The fact that the teams have connected, that we can share all of this with the community is also great. We'll probably have the next week or so, not only a post, but then also a thread sharing some of the key ideas behind the models, behind some of the decisions and some of the key steps. There will also probably be a more detailed roadmap about with the different exciting features that we're focusing on and so forth. But at the end of the day, it's a lot about effort, effort put in day in, day out to really reach these goals. Because otherwise, like, we all enjoy the discussions, but then going back, pushing on things, this is what we've learned the hard way. But we're always super excited to do and continue doing. Maybe before...
I think maybe one thing to mention is that this is the best time to get involved as well. Because, you know, we will need bright minds and other people to help us in this journey. And what we saw in the last years, and I know that you shared the same, is that now also how we recruit people into our companies is shifting. So, you know, someone might be interacting with us on Telegram or providing great ideas or feedback. And that's, you know, someone that we'll probably want to have in our company as well.
And become a team member.
Yeah, it's the best time to get involved. So we encourage you to, you know, share your feedback and ideas with us because there might be an opportunity for you to be closer to our companies as well.
Definitely. And we have a lot of bright minds in the Elrond community, probably in the Utrust community as well. But we're actively saying this out loud. We're looking for bright people always and for Utrust as well now. So even if people are from Portugal or around that place or whether they're from different other places but really excited about payments, do send us a note. We're quite curious to hear about you, hear from you. And yeah, this is really just starting out. So let's maybe take a few questions. I'm looking at, actually, one question for now. Maybe the community is still thinking about some of the questions.
The other one is in Romanian, so I still don't understand.
Yeah, yeah, this one we can...
Any timeframe when Utrust service will be available for merchants in the US. I mean, this is a topic that we discuss a lot internally. We have been working on this. We have solutions in place. I think now we are in a state that we need to prioritize what's the most important things to do first. I don't consider this to be absolute priority for the next months, but definitely a priority for Utrust and for Elrond. But we need to give priority to some things first. And I think this will be obviously a natural step for us. We have been working on this. But let's wait and see. Hopefully, it might happen this year. Depends on the amount of things we also have to do and all the other priorities we have in place.
Yeah. And I think, you know, what you have to understand with entering US or any other thing, it's not something that you can do from one day to another. So there are many elements that are related to, you know, compliance, regulatory framework that need to be taken in account. But I think, you know, it's been a long time that we've been discussing how we can do it and we have great solutions in place. But as Nuno correctly said, now is the time to prioritize our efforts as well. But it's not something that we forgot. It's still something important to us. The US is a huge market. It's a great opportunity and definitely will be taken into account. But we do not have a date yet to announce at this stage.
Sure. I see some other questions that have been coming in the other, like town halls as well about the MIR card. And I'm convinced that the community is super excited about this. Interestingly enough, we've had some discussions about the MIR card yesterday. This is still super tentative, but it does seem like first half of this year could be the period where this comes live. And I know everyone is wanting this and will use it and they're super excited. So as soon as we have a specific date, because things are close but in the works, we'll announce something really cool that the community can participate in and engage with. The one thing that I would say also, zooming out a bit, is people probably are used to a lot of things. And you've probably seen and we've discussed this, within Elrond, there are many, many threads that are now open and some of them are exciting, whether it's the MIR DEX and the listings and the process there, or some other DeFi elements or the bridges that have been built and are now close to coming live. Some upgrades even for MIR and other new things. All of this, all of these things are happening at the same time. And we're now entering a stage where we believe things will happen even faster on all these threads. So probably, payments will continue to be a theme that people will hear about, that will hear not only generally when we discuss, but with merchants that are coming live almost each day. Each day, there's a very large backlog of merchants that is now in the process even from the last announcements and so forth. So people are super, super excited about this in several regions of the world. But this is a very unique and special conversation about the conversation with Utrust, about the steps that we're focusing on. And I do believe that we're going to have from time to time this type of conversations where we share either really major milestones or new things that we're focusing on. But in any case, it was extremely important for us to have these conversations with the community, to open them, to start get feedback, to give them a bit more of the bigger picture of why Elrond and Utrust are joining, why this is very different than a normal acquisition, why this is very much a conversation between communities that are super focused on something very specific, and why it will take all the effort from the Elrond community and all the effort from the Utrust community to really take things to the next level, to really engage every step of the way. And whether it's the token model, whether it's other exciting things regarding the merchant yield or regarding different features, we do very much count on the community, on the engagement and also feedback, super valuable feedback. I see one last question. When UTK and MIR? This is a great question and we've actually been discussing this. It will probably be as soon as UTK will be an ESDT token? Because that's when it really taps into this entire ecosystem and joins the Elrond ecosystem completely. I'm not sure if you guys want to add anything else as like closing thoughts or just closing ideas that would be valuable for the community?
I mean, so far, I think this has been very exciting, this process. To achieve great things, you need to take bigger risks, right? And that's what we are doing here. Maybe in some years, people will call us crazy. Maybe people will call us genius, but we do what we think is the best in the bottom of our hearts for us and for our community, to be honest. And I think great things await for us and for sure, I'm super excited for the next months and years to keep pushing great products and fighting for crypto, for real crypto adoption.
Yeah. No, and I think, you know, I would just come back to the initial thing that I shared, which is, you know, what I love about this connection is that we came together to serve something larger than ourselves. And, you know, there is this passion to provide value to merchants, to buyers and to the community. And this is why, you know, we are doing things more transparently, like bringing the community in our product as well and welcoming feedback. So, yeah, personally excited about this.
Yeah, I could not be more excited to push this forward. And I know with the entire team, we've been having a lot of conversations. I think even looking for one moment, like at how the next five years, the next 10 years might look. If you think about 2030, it's very, very likely that the entire conversation of the default payments will not be normal stuff that we're doing right now. But we'll very much look at the normal stuff just as we look at, let's say, Telegrams, normal Telegrams and post office and so forth, once the internet was invented. It was like, how come we did not think about this a lot faster? And pushing on this, setting the goals and then making the things happen is what the community really knows us for and I think will continue to know us for. So enabling these new technologies to be used at scale is really a remarkable situation to be in and want to really push towards. I guess we'll see many more extensions of even the core products that we've been discussing about and many new discoveries. And here we very much welcome the feedback of the community as they take a look at the product, the feedback of the merchants, because, believe it or not, some merchants are watching the town hall conversations. And yeah, it's really a great time to be alive, push this forward and will not stop anytime soon.
Never. Let's go.
Yeah. Guys, thanks a lot for the conversation and talk very soon.
Thank you.
Cheers.